I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasta County Board of Education to order. Time is now five thirty-five. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Abby Deng has agreed to this pledge. Item three is approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda at this time?
I move we approve the agenda.
And a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Let's start, Laura?
Aye.
Jackie? Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Theresa?
Aye.
I affirm as well. Item four is public comment. Public comment for all agenda items and all matters that are not on the agenda but that are within the Shasta County Board of Education's jurisdiction will take place during this item. Members of the public are invited to fill out a speaker card and review the speaking to the board handout available at the check-in table in the back. The Board is not allowed by law to take action on matters not on the agenda, unless we're sought.
So, because I don't want it to come off as a political thing, I won't ask for a moment of silence, but I do think that especially since it happened on a campus, that everybody should keep in mind and in their prayers, not only Charlie Kirk but his family, he has a very young family, but all of those students, because it happened on a college campus, all of those students, all the students that have followed him, all the Turning Point students across the country, this is a man who is speaking to a generation, and those kids are going to have to deal with the trauma of what they saw, and that's huge. I know as an adult, my day has been devastated. I cannot imagine the kids who were standing there front row excited to see a hero and watching him fall. So, I just hope that you guys keep him in your prayers. That being said, I really hope that an entire generation rises up and we see the change on our campuses. Yesterday, there was an agenda item for SCOE that was brought before the Board of Supervisors, and part of that was the Board wanted to look into all contracts with SCOE and wanted to make sure that they went through the contracts and looked at the FTE, which is the full-time employment allocation for each of those positions, because there have been things that have been brought forward to the public, both by whistleblowers and through records requests, that say that there might be some double dipping. So, as that stuff comes up and questions get asked, please do not be on the defensive about it, but my plea to you guys and my response when somebody got up and tried to make it like a Kevin, you just don't like SCOE thing, is we want to see that you're not afraid to ask the questions. We want to see that you want to do the right thing. My experience with especially the two of you has been positive, that you're open to those questions and you're open to that. But this Board as a whole, I want to see that you're not afraid to ask questions. There's nothing wrong with questioning government, there's nothing wrong with oversight, and there's nothing wrong with looking into making sure that there's not a waste, especially in government spending. And that's your job as the Board, oversight of the budget and the spending. So, if there is double dipping going on, I hope that you would take that seriously. So, that's my soapbox speech for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Dan Moore?
Got to get my notes out and a bit of folder or something about this. Good evening, Board, and County Superintendent Mr. Freeman. My name is Dan Moore, I'm the Superintendent, Principal at Oak Run Elementary School. You've heard a lot about Oak Run over the last year, I think, before I got there. A lot of it's similar, it's true, but I'd have to tell you, it's a new season. Oak Run is a wonderful place to work, they've got incredible staff. I'm very excited to be there. Couple of things I want to talk to you about tonight. First of all, you know the history, but we're moving forward, and we're creating positions and programs, taking it to the next level. I am a retired superintendent, I came up and I'm running at work part-time. I have a small district, and once I get a call from Superintendent Freeman, said, "Why are you pushing out?" I did. I did not realize the compact city of the job at the time, so it is now a part-time job, it's still kind of a retirement job, but I'm really enjoying it, it's great, great community. A lot of people thought Oak Run was going to sunset probably, it is not. As of today, we have twenty-four students, and we are growing fast. We have a program, I'm going to pass out later to you tonight, today, just an hour flyer that we're doing, I'm very excited about what we're doing, we've got a good staff. Today, I arrived at school, had the whole agenda get done, and found out the bus was going to lake, a tree fell down, we had to wait for the guys to get up to cut the tree out so we could get the bus through. Found out we had two aides, and they're not to predict that they were sick, so none of my agenda got done. Now, one o'clock, and I finally sat down to do some work, power plant. So, it's been a challenging day for small businesses. But one of the things, the real reason I'm here is, is I wanted to, I could not do my job of working for the County Office of Education. I could not, and as an experienced superintendent, driven by business education, it's a busy superintendent. I haven't had this much, I've been working through great counties, I've never had this much support, ever, for what I'm doing. I mean, I'm just going to list off a few, I'm really bad with names, I couldn't look up from these last names, okay, because the Google's down, but Donnell in the Business Department is helping tremendously. Michelle, who works kind of as my CBO, is doing a phenomenal job, Michelle in payroll has really helped me a ton. Chris is in payroll. Will Barnett, I'll talk about him in a second. Kathy and Kate in the BLP program, which is the Children's Day Program, they've helped me a ton. Calpads, Special Education Department Christian. I didn't want to tell you one thing, but Will, one day I called him eight times, he finished up my LCAP, he gave us a two-day, three-day course, and we, when I got to the district, we had no curriculum. Now, because of Will's help, Enterprise Middle East, we donated curriculum to my district. So, again, for the wonderful, that's SCOE, I would not be able to do it. So, I just want to thank you, Superintendent Freeman, and the Board, and all the members of the small district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to item five, which is our Board Initiative. And I see Jen coming to the front of the court, right? So...
Good evening, Board, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm going to give you an update on what we have going so far for the new school year. This is just the start, but as we've seen from the presentation, we have a lot of really cool things coming down the pipes, and so, as I go through, just let me know if you have any questions, and I'll be right. So, first off, I wanted to give an overview of the main things that we're working on for this year. This isn't everything, but it's just the main things we're getting into. The first is, we are continuing to offer core in-class presentations, those will be on vaping slash tobacco, cannabis prevention, underage drinking, and then the new reality of drug use, which touches on opioids, fentanyl, and also now has a little bit of nitrous oxide worked into that, because over the past year, we've been having a lot of students ask us questions about nitrous oxide, which they refer to as galactic gas, so we decided we're going to start adding something about that. So, this is a record for the Prevention Department, usually right around this time is when we're starting to get schools on the calendar and maybe getting into classrooms, but now with having a staff of three, we have already completed eight presentations to two hundred and three students this year. So, that's a big testament to my staff prepping their presentations over the summer and just being ready to go as schools and children age out. So, that's a picture of Julie at Silk Camp, we were invited to present there this summer, and it was really awesome to be involved with all the students there and kind of expand out of the regular classroom setting. So, for the Youth Commission, we already have thirteen students signed up, so that breaks our record from last year, and our first meeting will be next month. So, we're excited to get the students in, we're excited to hear what they want to work on. They're going to be working a lot with the art contest and promoting that at their schools, and then we're going to work a lot with project proposals with them. So, last year, our Youth Commission did a lot of work in, you know, creating a code of conduct, selecting a logo, kind of building those foundational things, and so now this year, we can move from what they created for us into getting right into project proposals, hearing what they're seeing on their campuses, what they're passionate about, so we're excited to get them in and just get talking with them, get working with them. So, we actually have a really cool story, which I'll share at the end, but I'm really excited about the way that the Youth Commission is moving. And then for peer educators, we have seventy-four applicants, which is incredible. Each school within Shasta High School District has promoted Youth Commission and peer educators to their students, which has been a huge help to us. Shasta High has also opened it up for us to come and represent to their student leadership groups, a couple other classrooms, so we couldn't have these seventy-four applicants without those school partnerships, but now we have to get creative because we have stipends for twenty students, so we're going to have them for a training beginning of November, and then do individual interviews, and then launch them into classrooms. And so, from our annual training for youth support services, we already have schools reaching out saying, "We want your peer educators in our group in the classroom," so that's also encouraging. So, we are excited for what those students are going to do, and just as a reminder, the peer education presentations that we've created were not just created by Julie and Richard, they were created by also our Youth Commission, they were given to students, so curriculum has been vetted by the students that are teaching, which is a huge help. And then we've already launched the art contest for this year, it's called Piece by Piece, it kind of has a puzzle piece theme. For this year, students are creating their art on a puzzle piece, so then when we get them together, we'll be able to puzzle piece them together and create a really cool mosaic of art. And again, that is open to kinder through twelfth grade. If you know of a youth group or classroom or what have you that you want to get that information to, you can email, that prevention email, and we'll send you a Google folder link that has everything downloadable for you. But the end of that will be Thursday, November sixth, and then we'll pick our winners, but we wanted to have it open through October and through Red Ribbon Week, especially when we have Rocky here, to promote that to students, to get as many to participate as possible. And now we know how to get it into school districts, and so what kind of language they need to be able to pass it out, so we've been able to get a lot more circulation to see as we learn and grow this art contest. And we also have prevention mini-grants open, we have a few people that have submitted applications for that. Last year, some of our mini-grants went out to Reading Aqueducts, they went out to Foot Hill High School Sober Grad, so if you know of any youth involved group that is looking to do a prevention focused art, or prevention focused project, have them submit an application, they'll reach out to me, I can send you a mini-grant, but we're really excited about funding those different projects for our community. And then, these are some save the dates that we have for you, we're bringing back Rocky Heron for his fourth year in Shasta County, I'm very excited about that. So, he'll be here October twentieth through the twenty-fourth. A little switch-up this year, we'll be at the David R. Theater, which is youth prep, and we'll have him there Tuesday, October twenty-first, and Thursday, October twenty-third. And just so you know, I'll send you all a calendar invite, so that's already on your calendars, but he'll be there. We already have a couple of schools signed up, we're going to be getting a couple of more soon. And then we have our Substance Use Prevention Summit, also send you a calendar invite for this, but this will be eight to noon on Wednesday, October twenty-second, and we'll have Rocky speaking, we'll have Kim Vagadori, who does a lot of work in state, and we'll talk about cannabis, and we're going to have alcohol beverage control come talk about underage drinking in Shasta County, which is for them, and a couple other things like that. So, and a breakfast, so get ready for breakfast, we'll have Rocky, don't you worry. And then, any community events, if you are all, or any of it in the audience, is working with parent groups who would love to come out and have Rocky come out and present to parents, families, guardians, teens, coaches, what have you. We already have one youth event snatched up, but it is a little early, so just let me know if you have any ideas or good. And then, this is something you've implemented in our department, is tell me something good Tuesdays, just because you all want a little bit of levity on the teacher. So, this is a peer educator good news, this is one of the students that worked with us and did all of our presentations, and she reached out to one of our staff members and said, "These presentations, I've had such a good experience from you, they're so special." And that's Julie responding, "I love that." So, it was really cool to get that feedback, because when she started doing these presentations, she was one of our hosts, she was like, "I don't know if I can do this." And so, this is her at the end of summer, after doing her presentation as a peer educator, just saying, "I had a good experience." And then, this next one is from a Youth Commission member, and we do a lot of Youth Commission things, and so, when asked, "Why are you here?" She said, "I saw the positive changes and confidence in my sister and how much she grew from her experiences, and I want to have some of it for myself." And so, these are just fun little things to be able to hold on to, to put our wind in, to put my, and, you know, just to propel us into the work we're doing for the year. Look back, if you have any comments?
Jessica?
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, not Arthur, Theresa was first, but in the queue.
I just have a name that I'd like you to look up, just mainly for information, because this is one of the things that really, I really feel a need that it needs to be further into the school. And his name is Jose Witt, if I can write the name down for you, but I'd really like you to listen to him and the mental health aspect, and what's brought into the schools. So, just thought I'd run it. And the last name, W. Wright, too? Mitt Dorian? I don't know, I don't remember.
Yes, I was very excited that you said there's other opportunities, so if we can get a slide, a slideshow with you now, and if we can ask people if they want to host something, is that something that they're going to have to pay for?
Uh, no, it will, and we have done through the Board, we should have provided penal sense, something like that.
So, maybe if you'd like to host it at the Account Hall or something, they have been here, so what process, more like, if you do something like that?
Mike Freeman?
Yeah, so slides are included in the online agenda materials, so you have them there, but I just wanted to, I wanted to commend Jen and her team, as we've had the opportunity to hear you regularly giving an update, we feel that there's a sense of traction, right? When we try to do this in a couple months, or we try to do this in one year, and districts don't necessarily buy in right away, but as we're consistent now, beginning the school year, their presentation calendars are filling up way before they used to. And the numbers were impressive last year. I also want to thank Jen and her team because they are responsive. When we hear about nitrous oxide, we now have a team and we can go and say, "Hey, Jen, what are you hearing about nitrous oxide?" And she's like, "Cool, I've incorporated it in a couple of slides," and so now we are being responsive and hopefully proactive and not reactive and trying to get out in front of, this scene is continually changing, working closely with law enforcement partners, what are you seeing, and then how can this team use that information to inform their presentations?
Thank you. Jackie?
Thank you for all you do. I was not able to make that City of Reading meeting where our students got up and talked about the ordinance again, so I was wondering if you had an update on that?
They just spoke at the one, but they've had various meetings after, but students one asked to come back and speak, it wasn't as much open to public comments, but from what I know, the ordinance has passed.
It did, okay.
Yeah, not the way that they hoped, there's some things that were changed, but yeah, it passed.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, it seems like you're doing great work, I really commend you for it. What's the Board member role in this now? Has that been handed off to you, or are you still working with the Board?
Yeah, we are, yeah, we're having subcommittee meetings, and that's something that I was wanting to say, do you think that student board members that are assigned to the initiatives as well?
That's a, that is a, sorry, I didn't know. That's a great question, and I think that that's an opportunity for us to explore with our, with our two, we are in the process of shifting one of our initiatives, and I think we'll know more after September twenty-fourth in our all-day planning mission, but once those are established, I think that would be a great time to look at those subcommittee assignments for all trustees. Abby and Jacob, you're going to have an opportunity to look at those initiatives and decide which one you'd like to participate in support of.
So, for now, we're just seeing if anybody's available, and we're going to start having a board, running a subcommittee.
Right, I'm just curious, like, the whole process of it, was the Board been more of a sounding board, or how have the Board members been involved in all this great work that you just showed us?
Yeah, I would say, you know, we share the work, and then our goal is to ask the Board if they have input, if they have ideas. I know Jessica has given a lot of ideas about groups to reach out to from school parents, so I go to them for ideas and just kind of, yeah.
Thank you, Jen. I'd like to congratulate you on Andrew's staff for all of the work that you've been doing and all of the successes that we've had over the past year, including the second semester, so I think it's wonderful to thank you. Item number six is approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are actions of a routine nature, are items for which no discussion is anticipated and can be acted on if we seal the vote. Board members may request that any item be removed and given individual consideration. Mr. Freeman, you're up in the queue.
Might be a point of order. Jen, can you grab Maggie Joyce really quick? And Board, I do apologize, but I did not want Maggie to leave without us recognizing, it'll come up later in my superintendents update, you've seen Maggie recognize community partnerships, Dignity Health and Food Bank, I'm going to announce tonight that her program is a Golden Bell finalist. So, CSBA has recognized the work, and... So, uh, CSBA has recognized the work, and, uh, Maggie and her team will be recognized at the CSBA dinner tonight, or this, later on this year in the, uh, annual education conference. So I just didn't want you to leave. Congratulations, Maggie. Thank you. Jen, thank you. You are now free to leave the building.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Um, Jackie, did you wanna pull something from the consent agenda? Which item?
Thank you, Mr. President. Six-one-one, six-two-one, six-two-two. And that's it.
Okay, uh, did you read six-one-one?
Correct.
Six-two?
One, correct.
And?
Six-two-two.
Six-two-two. Thank you. Mr. Gorman, you wanted to pull something?
Yes, uh, item six-three-one.
Well, uh, that does leave one, uh, item on the consent agenda, so I will accept a motion to approve the item that is left on the consent agenda at this time.
Make a motion to approve the one item on the consent agenda.
Second.
We will have a little call, uh, Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Okay. Jackie, you pulled item one, uh, six-one-one, the meeting minutes from the August thirteenth. Will you be?
Yes, and the only reason I pulled those is so that I can abstain from a vote, 'cause I, I don't like voting yes when I wasn't here, 'cause I can't verify that it happened.
I, I, I appreciate that. Um, it, it, it's okay to approve the, the minutes, like, even if you weren't at the, uh, uh, working. Uh, you also asked to pull item two-point-one. I'm sorry?
Just a point of order, then, do we want to have a vote on six?
Oh.
Six-point-one-point-one.
You are correct. We would need to have a vote now on item six-point-one-point-one. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve item six-point-one-point-one. I vote affirm. Abby?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Author? Jessica? Jackie?
Abstain.
Laura?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Teresa? Item six-point-two-point-one, credentials and oath for temporary certificates. Jackie, you pulled that item?
So I just had a couple of questions on these, and I'm sorry if they're not in order. And I think I'm directing a mic to you first. So if you could just explain to me why we need temporary certificates? I understand we can't pay people unless they have a certificate in hand, and there's certain requirements that go with that. Um, but I was looking, and there's fifty-eight temporary certificates that we're, they're issuing this, um, this month. And so I'm just curious, how many do we do per year? Um, do you wanna do my question one at a time?
If I can answer those questions, yeah, I might have some homework. It sounds like...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Annual totals, I can go get.
Okay, yeah, so annual totals would be one. Um, how long are the temporary certificates good for? And you can get back to me on all these mic if you need to.
I would like to, uh, phone a friend and have Austin Brother help me out with this.
Uh, so the, uh, temporary certificates are issued as a short-term, uh, credential, uh, for applicants that are in the process of having their full teacher application approved by the CTC. Uh, they are good for a period of one year. Um, and our role as a county office is to verify that the applicants have submitted and completed, uh, to the CTC, um, the application that's required. The CTC is also the, uh, body that administers the oath. It is unfortunately just checking a box that they've read the oath online. Uh, when we receive that, uh, from the CTC, our requirements are, uh, to make sure that they've been fingerprinted and are otherwise eligible for employment, uh, before bringing them to this board, uh, for approval. Um, I think that the number of, uh, short-term certificates, uh, that we are asked to approve on an annual basis is just reflective of the shorter of fully qualified teachers, right? Um, we have classrooms that go, vacancies that go unfilled, and districts have to get really creative about how they, uh, make sure that they have enough bodies, uh, to serve students. And so I think that, uh, certainly every district would prefer to have a fully credentialed teacher in there. Uh, the short-term certificate, um, is at least a way of documenting that these people are working towards a full-time credential, um, while they are on that short term, which is good for a year. To my point, we can find out, uh, how many we processed last year. Um, I do believe, um, I had this conversation, uh, with our HR director, uh, last year when, uh, Trustee Gorman had asked some questions about this. I was like, "How many are we doing?" Um, I wanna say it was close to two-hundred of these that are being processed every year. I think certainly at the beginning of the year, there were more.
And I would just love to, uh, be on the record, um, for the millions of people viewing this online, uh, public education is an amazing place. Amazing things are happening in Chastity County schools, and I would love to have any conversation with anyone that would like to help us fill some of these places with certificated teachers. I have no doubt that our districts are working hard to support these teachers. Uh, some of these teachers are short-term teacher credential, as, as Austin mentioned, for the year. Some of them are in provisional and internship, and, uh, we as a county office are also making efforts. We had a meet and greet with new educators, the first time we've ever done an event like that, trying to be supportive so that, uh, these folks can, uh, have their, have their, uh, credentials, uh, provided through CTC and, and have amazing teaching careers in the county.
So our county credentials analyst, then, that reviews the temporary certificates and makes sure, it sounds like, so they're not qualified, they're not fully qualified to teach?
Jackie, I have to stop you.
Oh, sorry.
But you, you, you have to queue in, and you have to be recognized.
Question item.
Okay, okay, so you're, you're, okay. I'm sorry.
Um, so it's okay, I just have to remember, um, where I was. Okay, so they're not fully qualified credential-wise, but, so what our county credential analyst, um, is doing is making sure, Austin, you said, like, they're cleared, like, through DOJ and they're cleared through CTC. They've been released to fill out the application for a temporary certificate. Um, and then those are good for one year. So who, is that county credentials analyst also the one, then, that's checking that they're, that they're not, it's going over that year? Or is it then the district? 'Cause if we're just releasing them to the districts, but we're asked to approve it, it's like out of sight, out of mind. I don't know if they're coming back and finishing.
You know, I, it is my understanding, um, that our, uh, county analyst is maintaining all of that in terms of the short-term credentials, because we're the one that handle that as a county office. And so that responsibility would not be released back to the district, even if they are filling in on a short-term basis with the district. That function remains with our human resources office. Um, and as far as, um, I, I apologize, I really didn't wanna misspeak in terms of, like, um, credentialing is not my expertise, right? Um, I, I, I don't wanna cut these people short in saying that they are not qualified to be teachers, right? Like, if I said that, that's, that's my mistake. Um, they do not hold the full credential necessary for the positions that they're seeking at the time, um, but most often they're in the process of obtaining that credential. And so it gets them in the classer sooner than they otherwise would, and so it is able to speed up the process. Um, but I could find out more about what those specific qualifications are to get the short-term credential and follow up with you.
And I will say too, California has provided a dashboard so that the, our credential analyst is able to communicate in the spring with, uh, county or with districts in the county regarding their short-term and provisional internship staffing, so that those things can be, uh, addressed with the staff in the district setting to make sure that those district employees are taking care of the business that will allow them to have the authorization necessary to teach the next year. It's a wonderful program in the, the state's naming system, and it's called CalSAS, which is fun. It's a fun acronym.
So is there any mentoring from our side once they receive that temporary certificate? Or is any mentoring then done on the district side? As far as mentoring to help fulfill those requirements and get it done? Could, uh, yeah, unfortunately, you know, I hear the other side too, where a lot just sit and they're not working towards that. I'm hoping, um, that all districts did that, or if we did it, I don't know.
I'd actually like to take that question. Um, the, um, at the, at the conference this, uh, past weekend, I attended a, uh, breakout session, uh, that was conducted by Lake County. Um, they, they have a much smaller county than, than ours, but theirs is, is as rural as ours, and they have the same problem with credentialing teachers. And part of the problem is that neither staff nor the applicants understand the process to go through. So they create a, a program called REACH that will help candidates get credentialed at a county level. And I think, um, I was going to talk about it later, um, in the, uh, when we get to the, uh, to that i- item, but I, I think it is, it is exactly what you're thinking about doing, and they've already created it, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, so.
And it just kind of makes sense. I mean, if we're the ones appro, you know, the board is approving them, our county credentials analyst is analyzing them, they're keeping track of if they're coming up on expiration. Yeah, I think it would be in our purview possibly to do that.
Yeah, and I think that also, given the district size, so our Reddings and our Enterprises, they are able, they are able to provide the support for new teachers much more independently than, than Dan is at O'Crone, right? So as we work with our smaller districts, as, uh, as Claudia is, is connecting with superintendents, with Wendy, and having the conversation of what our needs as those teacher support needs are, we are looking at our coaching models. But to Robert's point, uh, I think we need to get better at communicating what we are doing, because Lake County's doing it. We are also in that REACH game. We've created teachchasta.org, which provides pathways if people are looking to teach. It's got different situations that will allow you to see steps forward. I'd love for Abby and for Jacob to want to teach, and our job is how can we get them, students that see a career that they could love in school, how can we get them in that classroom as soon as possible? Remove some of the variables. We've been working with, uh, Chastity College, Simpson, Chico, anyone that will listen, and so that we can remove some of those obstacles and make that from A to B to classroom as soon as, as soon as possible. So we do have a team, and I would love to connect the board with the team that is doing that work, so we can learn more.
Okay, great, yeah, so thank you very much. Um, if I could, if you could, Austin, research the last couple of years, maybe? That would be great, so I could see if there's a pattern. Thank you. Um, with that, I'm done. We can vote on that one.
Would you like to move to approve?
Uh, move to approve.
Item two-point, two-point-one. Do we need a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve item six-point-two-point-one. Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica? Author? Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. The last item that you pulled, uh, Jackie, was item six-point-two-point-two, informational technology surplus.
Correct. So we typically surplus, it says what is broken beyond repair or outside, um, of their supportable lifespan. I don't know a lot about technology, but one thing, the way I went through this list was looking at the year of the item, and I was surprised to see a lot of MacBook Pros, um, on here that were two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So I'm just wondering why we have so many newer MacBook Pros. Um, are those outside of supportable lifespan, or are they broken? I'm curious on those ones.
What I'm seeing, I see exactly what you're talking about, and I reviewed this with James as well. Um, the MacBook Pros that were purchased, um, in, uh, beyond twenty-twenty-one, so twenty-twenty-one to present, um, those were designated as uneconomical to repair, which essentially means that we have things that get dropped, we have things that accidentally get, you know, whatever damage to the point where it doesn't make sense for us to, uh, repair them, but to rather to replace the device. So what I see is those MacBooks that have been within the last four years are un, that uneconomical to repair. Um, there are some MacBooks beginning in twenty-twenty, um, and, uh, to your point about not being an IT expert, um, my understanding is that there's a certain point in the lifespan of a computer where, at home, I could use one of those MacBooks that's ten, fifteen years old and it still works for me, um, but they don't have the functionality that's needed for our IT department to maintain those for the things that the work needs to happen. Um, I'm sure that James could give a much better explanation of that, um, but it's that the device no longer supports the platforms, um, that our IT department needs them to for the functionality of maintaining safety, security preferences, um, within the organization.
And I'm just thinking, if that's the case, I mean, I know MacBook Pros aren't cheap, but if we're replacing them because we can't support them and they're only two or three years old, perhaps we need to be looking at a different product.
Is there, is there one on here that was two or three years old that was on the, the obsolete row would be the ones that were, um, because they're no longer functioning within the tech world that we need to? I, I could be missing it, but I don't see one that's less than five years old that, uh, was, that's on the, that's on the surplus list that is, is designated as obsolete.
Okay, and so maybe that's where, so I see two thousand twenty-two on the, on the very last page, the third item from the bottom, two thousand two MacBook Pro thirteen-inch, but it is listed as uneconomical. So when I see uneconomical to repair, I just need to, as a trustee, assume it was dropped physically? That it's not a matter of software?
In some, in some way, shape, or form, it was broken.
Okay.
Got dropped into a bathtub accidentally. I don't, I don't know exactly what happened to it. I, I don't know what happened to all of these, but that would mean that it was damaged beyond repair.
Okay, but obsolete would mean we either can't get the new operating system on there, it won't vary the newest operating system? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Author, did you have something that you wanted to add on this? You're on the queue. Are you just waiting for your item to come up? Um, and Tom?
Austin covered it, never mind.
Okay, so, uh, we would need a motion to approve item six-point-two, point-two, information technology surplus.
Motion to approve six-two.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Author?
Aye.
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. And the final item on the consent agenda is item six-point-three-point-one, Proposition Twenty-eight, arts and music in school funding annual report. Author, you wanted to pull that?
Yes, after reviewing this a couple of times, I kept on looking at the, the numbers of the, of page one of the attachment. It tells, um, the analyst, it tells us about student programs receive twenty-nine thousand eleven dollars, early travel services receive fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then, if you scroll down, I was just looking to see, uh, it said eighty percent, uh, this money has to go towards, um, instructional agencies, kinda like staffing, and then one percent of funds goes to administrative expenses. And then you go down there and it says that we don't have any, we have zero teachers, zero classified staff, zero aides. Number of students served out of the five hundred plus is two hundred and eighty. And so I'm just wondering, it didn't give us a report of what it was spent on. It just gave us the numbers that we received, uh, and then nothing else on the report. So I was just curious if there's line items that go with this report that we didn't receive, and then we can review that?
Those are really good questions. The, um, to clarify, with the five hundred students, that's for LEAs or local agencies that have five hundred or more students, because if we don't fall under that, we are not held to spending at least eighty percent of it on staff. So hence, that's the zeros that you see on the report. The report that's reflected here for twenty-four, twenty-five is, is the entire report. This is what we submit to CDE and what is required that we bring forth here. We can bring another...
We can bring another report that shows the breakdown of the spending. For this case, what happened in this past year in 24, 25, the amount, I don't know, I have the full amount, but I could provide that to you, of what we spent last year was with preschool students. And so what's reflected here is the professional learning opportunity, which the preschool teachers will engage in again this year, and therefore that impact was to all the students since the teachers attended the training and were engaging students in those lessons. Our student programs did provide art instruct-, instruction that would fall under arts and music, however, they used a different funding source at this time. How, what I'm hearing you say though, you'd like to see a breakdown of the expenditures for the 24, 25.
Correct, yeah, this is, this was a legislation that was passed, I believe, by the voters that we would put most of this money into Proposition 28, and we receive it back in the form of increasing arts and music in our schools. So I'd like to tell
Yeah.
the taxpayers where their money's going. If there's a line item, I'd really appreciate it, but yeah, this one has like, left me wanting more because I was like, well, there's $81,000 there, but I don't know how we spent it, it just says, did we spend all of it? Did we not spend any of it? I don't know.
No, we have not spent all of it, and so we are in our third year of receiving funding. By the end of this year, we need to spend at least the first year's allocation, otherwise the dollars continue to carry forward. We do have plans for this coming year that are very exciting, and part of those plans, in addition to what you see here with the professional learning that will be provided to preschool teachers, is actual dance classes for students. They'll go to the preschools. And so we are in the process of having a contract with the dance studio to provide those, in addition, looking at classes to be offered as electives in the arts and music for our students at independent study, and Excel Academy. And then currently, we do have weekly an artist that has been working with our students at Tri Mountain Academy. So we can provide what has been spent along with what the plan is moving forward.
And then you said they're getting monies from other grants or other agencies to provide some of that funding? Can you, if you, when you include that in our report, or in the report with these ones for the line items, can you include those as well?
Yes, if you recall, the arts and music block grant that was brought here a couple of months ago, that funding was used for that purpose. And so once those funds are depleted and used, then we can use Proposition 28 also to continue to provide the lessons, but yeah, we can share that.
And then what the staff is asking us is to approve the $81,000 for use?
No, what the, what the ask is, is that you approve this annual report that, this, this one page that reflects how many teachers were hired, which again, that, the staffing is not applicable to us because we don't serve more than 500 students. How many students were served, just, just the information on this one page. This is literally a snapshot of the report that goes to CDE at the bottom. If approved, we would then hit submit and send it to CDE.
So you're not asking us to spend money? And whether we vote to approve this or not approve it, the $81,000 will be spent without our approval?
Yes, we have an obligation to spend these dollars to provide the arts and music education.
Okay, so the ask is just to, just this report that you read up, this is what you're just asking us to say, send this to the state? And what happens if we don't send it to the state?
That's a great question. If we don't send it to the state, I, I'm not really sure what would happen at that point, if we could find out.
So it's, so it'd just be an audit finding? Does that come with a mechanism of slapping our hand, or fining us, or getting us in trouble? What does that even mean? Yeah? Okay, yeah? So there's not really a mechanism of action that could take $81,000 back if we don't do that?
And the other piece that I would just add to that about your question around like, whether you approve it or not, we're just going to move forward with sending it, this, this would have been included in the adopted budget that was approved by this board in June. So the, the funding for the program, you know, that was in the annual budget that was adopted by this board, this is just the report that's due to this E, so the funding has already been approved.
Right, and I think we talked about that during the funding, because there was a significant portion that wasn't spent on the budget report. We were all wanting it to be spent, so like, if we could, it'd be nice to have some line items so that we can take it back and say, hey, you know, we talked about it in another meeting, we know we have $81,000, this is how we're spending our money. Whether the teachers or the community use it, that's, that's then, but at least it's off.
That's no problem.
This is an action item, so we need to, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie.
Yeah, so I just wanted to echo Arthur's concern, because that was my concern as well when I read it, and I understand, like legislatively, this is the bare minimum that we have in reporting requirements, but especially because what it's for, I just would also like to see where it went in those areas. So I just wanted to echo his concern. Call for a motion to cap?
Mr. Freeman? Motion seconded. Okay. We do need a motion to approve item six point three.
It was already given, Jackie made a motion. Jackie made a motion and Laura seconded it.
Thank you. We will proceed with the roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Item seven, information, administrative services, item seven point one point one, general funding for early childhood services, financial snapshot board report. Does anybody have any questions? If there are no questions, we will take a two-minute break while we wait for six thirty to roll around so that we can up to our public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. It's action item eight point one point one, to receive public comment, excuse me, public comment regarding the sufficient textbooks and instructional materials for fiscal year 2025, 26. Are there any members of the public here tonight who wish to address the board at this time? Seeing more public comment, I will close the public hearing at this time. I do have a question about this, it is under action, do we need to take an action in part of this item?
Just the next one?
Just, I mean, just, okay, so we don't take an item, action on item eight point one point one, but we will take an action item on, or a, a, action on item eight point one point two, which is Resolution 2025-04, regarding sufficiency or insufficiency of instructional materials and certification of instructional materials.
I, I actually just wanted to request for several copies of these, so I, I don't have to do it right now, since we're on this item.
Copies of the actual instructional materials?
There's several ones that I would like copies of. If we have, I know we have enough, but do we have extra where I could just borrow them?
We can, we can connect you, I can connect you with, or I can work with Claudia in Instructional Services.
Okay.
And if I can work with you offline, maybe get the list of materials.
Thank you.
I move that we approve eight point two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve item eight point two, Resolution 2025 dash zero four. We're now, we're a call that, Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight point three, the revised board policy and administrative regulation 6158, which is an instruction for an independent study.
This is a current board policy and admin regulation that we do have adopted, however, this is a revised and updated version. This, the request here is for, of course, your choice, if it's a first read or, or you approve it. There is, there are changes, and those changes are noted on a document that is, has been added, which is listed in your agenda as board policy 6158 Independent Study. And so that guide sheet provides what you would be, a summary of the new laws and why this policy is being updated. Some of that includes a plan that needs to be in place, and so starting this year, included in the safety plan is a plan for instructional continuity, you know, should there be an emergency event that we continue instruction, and often that might be through the form of independent study potentially. Also, how accounting is done and the documentation for the independent study. There is the addition of a public hearing as well for considering what we have in existence, and so that is something we would bring forth next board meeting.
I move we approve eight point three.
There was a motion on the floor that we approve item eight point three, is there a second?
I'll second it, and we'll have discussion afterwards.
Eight point one point three, if you could correct that motion please.
I said I would second, and we'll have discussion after.
Certainly. So it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Warner would like to have discussion. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Jackie? Oh, I was, but Jackie, you were up first?
I was just correcting the motion, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to do that yet with Robert's rules, but the motion was for eight point three, it's actually eight point one point three, I was just.
Eight point, thank you. Mr. Warner?
Yes, I was just reviewing the law down here, and it's very lengthy and wordy, but I was wondering how our independent student, independent study students go to school for the two hours to qualify for a free lunch? It says here, if they go to school every day for at least two hours, they can still get a free lunch. But I would imagine most of our independent students don't go to school for longer than two hours.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there, maybe give me an example of how that would work in a functional, in reality, how does that actually work?
So there's some independent study programs that may require students to be on campus for longer periods of time, and so if they are there for a half day or a whole day, some programs operate that way, then the, the meals would be provided.
So like at our charter school, Anne Anderson, if they're having their kids come in for a half day or whatever, they would also be required to provide a meal at that time.
Yes.
I'm just looking at Carrie, anything to add, there you go.
Further discussion? It has been moved and seconded, that we approve item eight point one point three, revised board policy and administrative regulation 6158. Jackie? We're doing a roll call vote.
Aye.
Sorry. Hello, Laura?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Teresa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur? Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Thank you. Item eight point two point one, is student board member attendance at California Association of Student Councils, Student Advisory Board on Education, a conference in Sacramento on November third through the fifth. Need a motion to approve? Jessica? Laura?
Do they both want to go, or? Do they both plan to attend, or what's the?
Do they both plan to attend, or what's the context here?
Yes, I, I do plan to go to one of those, yes. And I have fit into my schedule to school to missing this, these schools. I'll just add.
Abby?
Yeah, I do think, at least because of the, there's also one in January, I haven't got to share that, but we'll see.
So I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve to send both of our student board members.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve action item eight point two point one to send both student board members to the Cassie Sable Conference in Sacramento, November third, fourth, and fifth. We'll now do a roll call vote. Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And Jackie?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Item eight point two point two, student board member attendance at the, the, uh, Cassie Sable Conference, which is the, the Student Advisory Board on Legislation in Education, which will happen in January twenty twenty-six. Are you both planning on attending this?
Is there a possibility to move deciding this to a later board meeting? I'm still figuring out deciding January what, when we're going to have that. So is there a way to have it discussed and approved in a later board meeting?
Uh, I think what we, what we have done in the past is discuss here, approve here, and that puts us up against, uh, any registration deadlines that Carmen would be working with. There you, you would have an open approval, and then if it works, great. If it doesn't work, no harm, no foul.
Sounds good.
Mr. Gorman?
That's what I was going to ask.
Thank you. Okay, so, um...
I'll make a motion to approve sending up our student board members if they would like to attend.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve action item eight point two point two to approve sending our student board members to the Cassie Sable Conference. Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur? Aye.
Jacob? Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
And I affirm as well. Thank you. Uh, item...
Can I ask a question real quick? Are you seeing my request to speak on the computer screen?
I have not seen your, your, your request to speak come up once, Michael.
All right. I just submitted the other one. Has it come up?
You came up that time. Would you like to speak now?
Are we on to eight point two point three?
Yes, sir.
All right, then yes, I would like to speak. So, uh, you know, this was my resolution from last month. I am excited and happy that it is now an action item. I believe that if we pass this resolution, it shows leadership and a part of this board. I know that we cannot tell districts what to do, and we are not imposing our will on them, but we can light a path as far as leadership goes. I think each of these items are important on their own, and when grouped together, they can clearly show that our belief in improving schools in Shasta County. Um, I know that at last meeting, there was talk of some of this stuff being controversial, particularly in the area of cell phones. I think if you look at the data of the harm that cellphone use causes students, since, you know, since the advent of cellphone use, depression, anxiety, suicide, suicidal ideation, social isolation, and body issues have dramatically increased. That is not my opinion. That is just pure fact based on data. Uh, I know that local schools have implemented a no cellphone policy during the day, like in prep, have experienced dramatic increases in engagement among students. I know that they have seen behavior issues decrease. I don't believe that is controversial. I think that is just pure data. Uh, I know that community service was another point that seemed to spark a lot of disagreement. But I think over the last several years, if you look at our society, we have drifted apart as a society. We're not, we don't have a lot of community anymore. I know that there is concern that maybe students are too busy to take on something else. But I have worked with probably thousands of teenagers over the last almost twenty years in education and spoken to dozens of teachers and other community members on this issue. I don't really think that there is a time issue when you consider a hundred and eighty school days and a very short, we're not setting any time limits here, but if it was, for example, ten hours, I'm pretty sure someone gets a ten hours in over a hundred and eighty school days. I know that a local private school requires thirty-two hours of community service, and that those students are just as busy as others, and, and an essay assignment, and they manage to meet the thirty-two hours of community service. I think that if you spend some time just driving around Reading, you can see that people have lost a lot of consideration for other people. And I think if we encourage community service, that brings a sense of civic engagement back to our students. And maybe in the future, we can have better interactions among people in our community, and we can build better community. This is not something that you have to go sign up at Mercy for or a church. This could be community service as far as helping your neighbor rake their leaves and just get it signed off. I think the other items on this resolution speak for themselves, you know, encouraging attendance. You can't learn if you're not at school. You know, you can't, you can't read because we're, we're not instructing properly. You're not going to do well at school. If you don't involve parents, students are not going to be very well, very engaged. And I think that if you look at those three issues, you will see increased student scores. You'll see increased engagement. And I also think that's part of the other thing, if we expect our students to demonstrate a certain amount of behavior, I think it's perfectly fine to expect our teachers to also show professional behavior and attire in the classrooms. And that would be up to the individual district or how they see that, but I think that we can encourage that. And I think, you know, for almost twenty years, I've been involved in education. I think education is one route out of poverty, out of crime, out of cycles of violence and substance abuse. And I think for too long, there's been a lot of discussion about things, but no action. And while I know we're not imposing anything on any district or any one school, we are still taking steps towards an action by saying what we support and what we encourage in Shasta County. So I hope that people will see this as not as a criticism of schools, but as a call to action. And I hope that my fellow board members will support me in passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orlikky. Um, due to limitations of student trustee votes on, on, uh, being preferential votes regarding non-binding, uh, uh, as a result of resolutions, I think it's essential that we have, hear from our students before we, uh, take a motion. Uh, Jackie, the action on this item. Jacob, have anything to say?
I mean, I know my final vote does not count, and I just want to let you guys hear me out on what I have. It's, I'm offering, you know, my advice to the student and everything. I love this resolution. It's very great. It's very strict, and I think that's what we need in education now. Um, I know as a board, we can't tell what, uh, districts to do, and they have their own rights. They can do whatever they want in their district. If that's something you guys want to support with the cellphone, the, the, the two, two biggest is the community service, high school graduation requirement, and the cellphone policy in schools. If that's what you guys support, that's okay. I know districts do have their own things, and if there's a problem in the district, then students within that district can go to their board meetings and do public comment and figure that out there. If you guys just have any questions of where I'm coming from, just ask me about it. But it's mutual, I know.
Thank you, Jacob. Abby?
Yeah, I agree with what you just said. I mean, I think this is something that the board, um, wants to stand for, and it's, um, like you said, um, a lot of these decisions, the, the districts themselves can still have the title saying, and if students within the district, like you said, um, have opinions on that, they can go directly to the district. Um, coming from, you know, a student, some of these are maybe not as popular within the student, buddy community, um, particularly the cellphone use, um, and the community service. It's definitely not, will not be popular for students. But I think it's definitely, like, important to implement these in our schools. Um, that's my opinion. May, probably won't be the opinion of a lot of students. So, yeah, that's my comment.
Thank you, Abby. Laura?
Um, so kind of, I guess, a repeat of last time, but I do appreciate the good intention behind it. There's a lot of stuff that I think are good ideas. I just think we're out of our lane. In general, I tend to be somewhat hesitant about resolutions because I don't think they're that impactful. They don't have, they don't really affect that much change. Um, and I think you, as a board, you need to be careful about how many you do, because the more you do, the less meaningful they become. Um, so there really needs to be a compelling reason of why you do it. Um, this one, I'm just not sure what it would accomplish, and I'm concerned that the reaction could be negative. The role of the county board of education, the role of the county schools office is to support districts and work collaboratively with them, not tell them what they should be doing on a policy level. And I think like these, the thing of calling for a ban on cell phones and creating a new graduation requirement, that's overstepping our authority. That's what a local school district does. In some ways, if I were a local school district, I might find it insulting that we're saying like these, this is what, um... If we're a school district, I'm sure you're looking at this and going, you know, yeah, that's what we're doing. And these are things we care about. So I, I don't want to put it out there like, hey, we figured it out, folks. Um, because I think that a lot of school districts are really working very hard in these, in these very areas. So I, my preference would be not to adopt the resolution, but if we were to move forward with it, I would have two proposals that I would change. On the cell phones, I mean, I personally don't believe that a cellphone should be used during classroom time, but I have to say that I haven't, um, delved into it really deeply. And before I called for a ban, I would want to, I would want to hear from families. I would want to hear from teachers. I would want to hear from students. And I imagine there probably are some ways when a cellphone might be a useful tool in a classroom, especially with AI coming up and so, so I don't know. I mean, my gut feeling is I don't think that they should be there. But, and I know the state has, um, has dealt with this issue. So I would, at the part when it talks about the cell phones, I would change it to the board supports prohibiting or limiting student cell phones during instructional time. And then on the, um, community service, I believe really strongly in community service, and I think it's a great, um, thing for young people to be connected to. But if you want to make that connection, making it a graduation requirement, I don't think is the way to get there. Um, I, I would support a school-wide culture and classroom projects that do community service. And there have been some great ones that I've seen with our local schools here. There was a, um, AP history class last year that, um, they wrote books about historical figures, and then they went to their, uh, elementary school, and they read those books to the students. And then the students got to keep them, so they were connecting. There was this connection between older and younger students, and they were learning. And so I think there's all sorts of opportunities there, and I think the schools are doing some really great work in that area. And I would just hate to see it become a, oh, no, I got to figure out a way to check the box and do this. But that doesn't mean that I don't believe in community service. I do. So for that one, um, I would just, I would change it to read the board supports a school-wide culture and classroom projects built around community service. And I do, I kind of wonder about the thing about standard of professional attire and if we're getting into maybe something that districts do with their employee groups. I don't, I don't know how much, um, school districts have the same.
Thank you, Laura. Jackie?
So I wasn't here when this was first brought forward, but I did read the minutes and your concerns, Laura. I, were very well documented in the minutes, so thank you for whoever did the minutes. That was helpful for me to be able to look at the concerns you had with this resolution. Um, I think the resolution is beautifully written. Um, I, I don't have a problem with any of it. I think like Michael said, there is a lot of data, um, to support a lot of these points. Um, you know, the banning of the cellphone use, I mean, banning and prohibiting really linguistically is the same, same thing, same intentions, same, um, power behind it. So I like that he put in, um, during instructional time, because I know it's illegal. I think, right, Tom, to ban them from schools right now?
I believe the statute allows for a policy banning use on, you know, on campus.
Okay.
With, you know, with several exceptions. My experience anecdotally is that most schools are focused on instructional time.
Right. Okay, yeah. So I appreciate that part, although I do know the word banning is scary, but it does, it does specifically say instructional time, which I don't think that's too much to ask at all. I don't think any of these things are. Um, so I want to thank you for presenting it, Michael. I think it's beautifully written. And I just want to remind everybody that we, I, myself, am here because people trusted me to do what I said I was going to do. And these are the, these are a lot of the things that I have issue with. Um, and a resolution simply is our board stating our opinion on something. I understand resolutions don't have a lot of teeth, but they can be impactful. They can bring people together. I understand your concern that perhaps LEAs might be thinking, you know, oh, we're micromanaging. Are we telling you to do something? Well, you already have the, the authority and the, and the, um, the jurisdiction to do that themselves. I would hope that that, that wouldn't be their attitude. I would hope that they would see, well, we are trying to do all these things and say, oh, yeah, now we have another, another member in the community that's encouraging us to do this. I, I would hope that would be the reception, and if it's not, that's their choice, not ours. So I support the resolution as is.
Thank you, Jackie. Teresa?
Well, I have to agree with everything that Jackie just said. I said, but, I mean, the community service, and I'm a big advocate for it, you know? Um, and I did find out that there is a, another school, and we do thirty-two hours a year, every year. Eight hours a quarter, an essay after each quarter stating what they did. And when I talked to one of the girls who did this, she was in the school. She's not going to Foothill. Um, it helped her to realize what her necessity was in the community. It wasn't all about her. It was actually something bigger than her. And I think that our society in this generation has gotten so self-centered that they can't think outside themselves. And I think that that needs to come back. It needs to come back. You know, and, I mean, being in school, back in our day, we had that. And the teachers had professional attire, but we're not asking every district to do this. We're not requiring this. We're just setting the example. And I think that that's the important thing, is to set high standards, set the example, and hopefully let us schools follow. I will support it.
Thank you, Teresa. Jessica? Jessica, could you speak into your mic, please?
Very well written. Michael did a great job. Um, and it has a lot of good, important information in it. Um, I try and think of it through a lens to students and parents, and probably go and let it apply to her and from, back from parents regarding some of these topics, um, and students. Michael, too, he's a good high school here, and, um, she, too. And, uh, and I know students would rate poorly against the cell phone ban. Um, probably would be horrible for them in school. Um, and actually, I, I did support legislation, sort of take the paths that I thought, but that would be a little bit. But do I think that he should be the one pushing the juggle on them? I do not, kind of, I don't. I feel like it's, it would damage our relationships. The school potentially is a way to go. Like, they were trying to manage them. They have their management. They have their own board. So I don't believe in our position. Um, I also think that the, the professional attire, they, they have the means, they have the one for their. And it will just suggest, you know, what is professional attire in the neighborhood, that means different, different people. And it's also, um, in some way that attire makes a good role model, which I'm not sure about. I don't know. But, so I would, I'm going to, you know, mostly around the department, wait, you know. do. But, so I would, I'm going to, you know, mostly around the department, you know.
Thank you, Jessica. Arthur?
Thank you. Yeah, I read it this last time. I agreed with all the statements based on being a parent and father, and just looking at it through, uh, my own lens, and being at home with the family and whatnot during instructional time, even coaching kids. I couldn't imagine what they were just doing on a cellphone during instructional time. They wouldn't get anything done. Uh, and I've been in classrooms where this has had, has been a problem. Cell phones have been taken away, uh, especially in elementary school. Kids, as they grow and they learn, there's kids that are really good without using a cellphone as a tool. Uh, whether it's a calculator, or whatever it is for the project, a lot of folks now want their kids to be all on Google Classroom, which has its own things. If your kid doesn't have a computer, use Google Classroom, they're at school all day, or they're on the phone, sitting on the phone, you know, learn to text, everything, friends. So it's like always distracting. I don't know, have you ever, you've been like that in church, you're sitting there, the Bible, looking on your cellphone, all these notifications are going off, and you're like, I don't care, whether you're reading it, uh, a book at home, and now you're like, oh, this is great, and all the notifications are going off. They're like, oh, squirrel, you know, somewhere else. Like, okay, well, this is an appropriate use of the cellphone, maybe I have to turn all that stuff off. So as, uh, you know, as adults, sometimes we have to be parents in the room, uh, to say, you know, this instructional time, we focus on instruction. Uh, free time, by all means, take your cellphone wherever you want, you know, if you work in a larger school system, they're really involved with couches. And so then just after this last meeting, we've all, I haven't seen a lot of protest riots in the street yet, but New York, with a bunch of high school students taking to the streets protesting. So I have, I'm pretty sure it's appropriate use of the cellphone, not having it during instructional time. Uh, I mean, that's it. Community service would be great, where it helps one of, uh, churches, or, or, or different, but, we're there with the community, whether you're helping an elderly, stacker with a year, or you're going and putting letters, or whatever they always sign on top of it. So it was like, you always were doing something in the community, whether they were in your church or in the community. The expectation was that you were, you know, the widows, the orphans, and helping. And that, every year, you know, it was really good. And as a kid, you're like, I don't want to be doing this, but as you see, the old lady, she could stand for it. And she was working out, you know, and probably looking for some kind of, it's just a great way to give back, and, uh, I think, use all of these, you know, to read it, read, read it through. I think all of us are dreaming, and we're dreaming of stuff here. And I just think it's a great way to tell the community what Shasta County Board of Education expects. And I think that this doesn't tell any other school districts what to do, or if they're on their own, or whatever, they can do whatever they want. They can, they can tell us what to do, they can tell them what to do, as they understand the jurisdiction and authority. And I'm pretty sure lawyers will probably tell them that we can't tell them what to do. I don't think that's something that's on the table. So I'll be, uh, supporting this, uh, in the board, in the community board, to help with this.
Thank you, Arthur. Um, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Um, so, number one, uh, the cellphone, uh, the law regarding cell phones is going to require us to adopt a policy regarding cellphone use by July of twenty twenty-six. As part of that process, we're going to have to hold, my understanding is, two public hearings, which include student voices and, uh, parent voices, uh, as well as, uh, the voices of the, of the people on this board. So in developing that policy, I'd like to request the students to consider participating in, in, in that process. Um, the second thing I'd like to say about cellphone use is, is that, that we're, we're starting to develop a, a statistical body of data regarding, um, the impact of cell phones. Um, in two thousand, cell phones were drug typical rare, where, uh, three percent of young men under the age of twenty-five, uh, stated that they had no close friends. By twenty twenty, that number had gone to twelve percent. And in twenty twenty-five, um, it's twenty-five percent. Okay, so, I mean, yeah, my personal interpretation of that data, cell phones are isolating us. They're not connecting us. So, I mean, that's just my personal observation. And with that, I will go on to Michael.
I guess I'm just asking a clarifying question from Tom. The, the law is prohibit or limit the use for cell phones, right? So that's already the law in California? Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. Bear with me a moment. I have the bill here. Yes, the new legislation requires schools to adopt a policy to limit or prohibit the use of smartphones by pupils while they are at a school site or under supervision of, of employees. So that could be breaks, field trips, instructional. So key word, prohibit or?
And prohibit and ban are the same, they're synonyms. They mean the same thing.
It might be, sure.
Michael, Jessica?
I just wanted to make one more mention. I forgot about the community service requirement for graduation. I'm a huge community service fan, about the hours, it's major, something to do a hundred hours. But I, um, as a child, so, I had a very young mother, I'm almost sixteen when I was born, farm. Um, I was in the Bay, and all these other things that I could do personally in school, but I didn't have support from my parents at home because they were working, they were too busy. Um, my mom was focused on other things that she's doing within her life. And I know we have those kids here too. And I would just hate to see kids that don't have support at home, that can't do community service, because they don't have, or somebody's driving, maybe they live in overrun and they can't do whatever. Maybe their parents are on drugs and there's stuff, you know, they have other things like eating every day that they need to worry about. And I think that community service, culture is a great idea, but I think that our, like, I'm saying, you should be required to do this. I forgot to mention that. If we pass it, I, I would work to renew the graduation requirement.
Thank you, Jessica. Mike?
Uh, yeah, I think, I just want to, I just want to put a highlighter on, um, there are just some inherent limitations, and many of you have spoken through those things. But I would just, I, I do want to make sure that, I do appreciate the use of the word "support" in the language of the resolution. Um, but districts are going to know just inherently that this is limited in scope to the jurisdiction of the Shasta County House of Education Board. And so, um, I, I think that the resolution could be an important way to, uh, send that message of what the board does support for those that are in favor of the resolution. But given your elected, uh, au, your elected authority and your lane, there are, there are going to be inherent limitations to this enforcement. So any action here tonight does not, uh, does not force Foothill High School to be in a community service graduation requirement, right? And using the term "support," it does say to those that are paying attention to actions taken by this board, that those that were in favor of that are in support of those things. Um, and so, I just want to make sure that everybody prior to any action taken has a clear understanding of the limits of what this does actually mean for students of Shasta County.
Thank you. Abby?
Just to, um, to, um, to talk about, we're discussing cell phone use, community service. Um, I think the, the phrase, um, instructional time is kind of vague. Does that mean like during class time? Does it include maybe like lunch, or breaks, passing period and stuff? Um, cause in class time, like, at my school specifically, teachers already have, what their policies, their own policies of like cellphone control. So, um, is that, but there's no really, um, policies in my school where they limit cellphone use during breaks, in lunchtime. Um, so, yeah, so that's one of my questions. Um, also, cellphone use, I think, uh, although definitely prevent to be harmful, sometimes it has its benefits, such as today, we had this, I'm sorry, this is like personal, but we had this, um, fires, uh, a fire alarm at my school. It was a false alarm. But, um, it was scary to some people. So it's definitely communication from our cell phones, like, um, messages and phone calls from the school was definitely an important part of like assuring the students it was fine, it was okay, like what was happening. And if we didn't have our cell phones, maybe it would have been a chaos. And, I, I don't know. But I feel like in cases of emergency, cell phones are definitely important with providing information, communicating, providing communication with parents, staff, teachers, students. Um, onto the community service part, I agree with what, um, she just said. Uh, I think it's important to foster a community service culture, not necessarily a graduation requirement. Um, yeah, uh, community service, I am also a strong believer of. I, I do a lot of community service myself. Uh, I think requiring it may, to some students, become a burden, not, it's, I know, like, it comes from that we want to foster this culture of community service, right? But if we're requiring it, it makes to some students feel like you're trying to force them to maybe do this community service, and they may not think that it would be, like, they're trying to give back to the community, and just think it would be like a graduation requirement that they have to do, and they don't see that it's trying to make them, like, get back to their community and stuff. Yeah. So I think maybe, uh, graduation requirement doesn't really achieve the, like, intended purpose that this, um, resolution would have, yeah.
Thank you. Arthur?
Thank you. I was just bringing up things that we learned as nurses, and are all over trauma classes and whatnot. And, uh, we were doing really great as a society of decreasing automobile accidents until two thousand eight. It was going downhill, we were putting seat belts on people, people were paying attention, the training was really good. And in two thousand eight, the invention of the smartphone came, and we surpassed any, our accident was really ahead. Uh, it's just, it's, it's, cell phones are a great tool, you know, for an appropriate time. Not in the car when you're driving around, when you're having a, when you're getting an instruction, when it's like you have forty minutes to like pay attention in class, instruction with the teachers, most of the time. And I went to school a long time, prepared that lesson, I worked really hard, just so that the kids in the classrooms, like, get them to go beyond their standards. Like, that's precious time. Going from twenty to thirty minutes of like intensely focusing on the instructional material, their, their career, their job, in society. So, I don't know, I think it's too much to ask to be engaged and purposeful in the classroom, understanding what the teacher's trying to, to struggle with. So it's written, beautifully written. So I'd like to make a motion and pass this resolution as written.
One second.
We still have people that are in queue to discuss this. Um, but I recognize that there's been, there's been seconded, that we have to, uh, Michael?
So I know Mike already addressed this, and it's been mentioned before, but a resolution is just showing support. I think everyone here knows we're not implementing policy. So I know that there is a cellphone policy has to be put into place with public hearings. That's kind of not relevant to the discussion, I guess, because we're just, we're just saying we support this. All right? It's not that we're instituting the cellphone policy right now. And instructional time means class time in the classroom. That's, I don't think that that's vague at all. I know the other, I know that Tom mentioned that they can also be extended out to lunchtimes, field trips, and things like that. But the resolution clearly says instructional time, which is what Arthur was talking about, the time in the classroom. And if you're, you know, you have a fifty-five minute period, that is a very short amount of time to learn every, every day. And if you have people distracted by cell phones, you're not learning. I mean, that's just true. I mean, I've been taught in classrooms for over almost twenty years. I know that if they, if I let them be on their cell phones, they are not going to be engaged, they are not going to learn. And I believe there's an exception in the law for emergency circumstances to use cell phones, so that would not go away. We're not saying you can't have them on campus, and we're not even imposing anything on a school district. We're just saying we support them not being used in instructional time. And I know that you, that there's been concern about requiring community service, that that lessens it. But, you know, sometimes you have to learn things, and you have to experience things before you realize that you like them. You know, we would love everyone to be intrinsically motivated on their own, you know, just to do things because it's good or it's right. But sometimes there has to be extrinsic motivations, which means a requirement of some kind. There are requirements for driver's license, there are requirements for voting, there are requirements for all kinds of different things. And I don't really view that as any different. I view it as just something that would encourage students to get out there and do different things, work with different people, and maybe learn some new skills, and maybe discover something that they really want. I discovered I wanted to be a teacher by volunteering in a classroom. That's how I decided, that's how I discovered that I wanted to be a teacher. If I never would have volunteered or been required to do that, I would not have known.
Thank you, Michael. Laura?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be an apologist for cell phones, because I can't really think of anything else I did to say about them. So I will just, uh, focus on this community service one, and ask you if you would be willing to change that particular whereas, because I do think that if your, if your goal is really to connect with people and prevent the deal, I mean, how important it is to give back and what rewards that brings, I think it would come better with a school-wide culture and a classroom project for it. So I'm proposing that that particular whereas, would say whereas civic responsibility is a vital part of education, and the board supports a school-wide culture and classroom projects built around community service to instill in students the value of giving back and being active members of their communities. So I'm not saying that it shouldn't be there. I appreciate your, where you're coming from, because like, these are priorities, you know, we are saying, you don't have to do this. But I do think that this could backfire and keep, I, that, uh, interpreted the way that we are, that the county, the county board is trying to tell school districts to do this, too. Um, I hope that wouldn't happen. I mean, I still haven't really been clear about, why would happen with this resolution if we were to pass it, but, and, and, I yield to you.
I view it as passing. It would say, this is what we support and are encouraging. I know that, and that's what I think is doing, is showing some leadership in these areas. And so I guess my question to you then would be, are you offering an amended motion to change that item? Since there is a motion on the floor right now to pass it as is, are you, are you suggesting an amended motion to change that?
Um, I guess if that's the process of, but, just going back to your answer, so we pass it, and then are you going to try to publicize it, or how is it, how is it, how are people going to know that this is what the?
I mean, yeah, I, I would probably publicize it. I could send it to the media and see if they have any questions. I would be willing to do interviews. So, and I, I think it says "support" in there. It doesn't say, you know, that, yeah, "care by, supports, and affirms." Nowhere does it say that we're implementing anything. So if somebody misunderstands that, then I would suggest that maybe go back and read the document.
So I don't really understand the process of this, uh, amendment, but I just suggested that I would do it.
So the, uh, motion on the floor is to pass the resolution as written. Um, if you would like to amend the, the, uh, resolution, you would need to make an amended motion. You'd need to make a motion to make this amendment and then have it seconded, and, uh, we would vote on whether or not to accept the second.
So I will make that motion to amend as with what I just read. I can read it again if you want.
And then it would need a second.
Whereas civic responsibility is a vital part of education and the board supports a school-wide culture and classroom projects built around community service to instill in students the value of giving back and being active members of their communities. So in essence, it gets rid of the graduation requirement.
Thank you. Oh, is there a second? Uh, we still have people up in the queue. Jacob.
Real quick, because I know we're going very long talking about this, I'd just like to point out to all the board members, before you go ahead and vote on anything real quick, that instructional time, like you guys said, does include the fifty-nine minutes that you're learning period, period, not any passing periods. However, when teachers instruct, give directions and give us the time to work on our work, I think that's the time when we like truly learn, when it is, when we're doing our work. And how, works at my school, we get instructed without phones, phones in the pocket, phones in the backpack. The phone can be on your desk after we're done instructing and you can use it as you'd like, but that's the point where you have to have your own self-control and use your phone how you like. And like you mentioned with the cellphone in the cars, that's exactly where we're going to learn when we use our cellphone appropriately, is in the classroom. Having the phone available to us while doing our schoolwork is essential to learning when we're in a car driving. Do we use our phones while we're driving? No, yes, no. That's where we're learning it all from. I would just like to just let you know that whatever you give out to the school boards and they view it as whatever they would like, and it ends up passing in favor of what we support, however the students feel they will show it, and I'd be in su- support of showing it to you guys, but I'm just going to end my talk there because I do have something to talk about that. Just be mindful.
Thank you, Jacob. Jessica.
I was going to say something else, but now I'm going to say something else. So, uh, I just appreciate both of our students giving their voices on it and I want to, um, both of you said you, you kept referring to us as you guys, and I want you to be reminded that you are part of this board, even though you don't have a vote. It is our responsibility to hear your voices and also, um, you know, make decisions with your voices representing students involved, so I just thank you and I, and I'd like you to try and use language that includes your cell phones.
Thank you. Arthur.
Yeah, I really like the, uh, community service being part of the graduation requirement and, um, I like how it's written and I think it is pretty broad because it could include pretty much anything. It doesn't limit the scope of what you have to volunteer in. Like Michael was saying, he volunteers as a teacher's aide in a lot of high schools. I mean, where you go to school, maybe at my kid's school, a lot of high schools deserve teachers aides for junior high and elementary, or at least helping out in the classroom and doing things, so there's a lot of opportunities to even volunteer at the school during school hours or even after school education, so lots of opportunities out there. Uh, you can certainly look for them, and if you got a requirement, say ten hours a year, I'm pretty sure you could go there and ask them if you really want to do something. I know a lot of college people want that, um, um, you're an application, they want to be, be volunteering, so you have to be competitive and go out to school and graduate college and build a career as a graduate school, that's going to be beyond as an undergraduate. So I have a lot of time to give back to the community, keeping it open ended, just saying as a requirement, I think is beneficial, limited, so maybe to go out in the classroom.
Michael.
I, I think it was already addressed what I was going to say, so I will, you'll...
Jacob.
I think I will, I think he's going to answer, don't help that.
Okay, um, well, that ends the queue. My understanding of Robert's rules is that we would vote on the amended motion first. Um, so, um, to accept the, the amended motion, we'll put Laura's verdict on the, um, part of the resolution dealing with community service, we will now do a roll call vote. Laura? Jackie?
No.
Jessica?
No.
Arthur?
No.
Jacob?
No.
Abby?
Aye.
I affirm. Theresa?
No.
And Michael?
No.
Uh, two binding ayes. Abby, as a preferential, would have been a third, so the motion fails.
Thank you. Now we will vote on the original motion.
I am sorry.
Subpoor, pardon, Mr. Warner. Arthur?
I vote aye.
Jessica? Jackie?
Aye.
Laura?
No.
Michael?
Aye.
Theresa?
Aye.
Jacob?
No.
Abby?
No.
And I vote no as well.
Four, three. Four, three, motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, point two, point four. We need to appoint in the, uh, a representative from this board to the Association of California County Boards that we joined last month, so, um... Jessica.
Apologize, I'm trying to put myself in the queue, but the wifi was down for a second. Um, can I just ask what that would entail? Like, do we know how many hours a week or a year? I'm interested, I just don't know what it entails.
Most of the meetings will be done by Zoom. Okay, that, that, that's the first item. Um, it, it would entail attending the regular meetings of the ACCBE board, and I'm not sure, but I think they're kind, they're, they're doing one per month at this point, so that would be the timeline, I mean, that's like your, like what your commitment would be.
If there's no one else that would want to do it, I would volunteer to do it. If there's no one else that wants to do it, I would volunteer to do it.
We have a volunteer. Would someone like to nominate Jackie?
Okay, we'll nominate Jackie. I will second the nomination.
Okay, um, is there any discussion of this? Yeah. It is, uh, Jackie Labobera has been nominated to be the ACCBE Board Representative for Shasta County. We will now take a little call vote. Theresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
I affirm as well. Thank you, Jackie, I appreciate you stepping up.
Sorry, I'm working on also getting my name on here. Can I just add, ask for a point of clarification really quick?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, as I look at the information provided by ACCBE regarding the role of, there is a short monthly updated board meetings on ACCBE news, and I, I guess I can work with you, Robert, in the agenda setting, is that something that we would like to add, add to the agenda as a standing agenda item, or is that something that Tracy Labobera can include in her, in her correspondence under the board comment correspondence feedback section?
Well, I mean, it, it's not the only, uh, association that we have, I mean, we, um, so I think it would be appropriate for, for, uh, Jackie to report out, uh, under item eleven, uh, one, um, one, two, so, um, does that work, Jackie? Thank you. Moving on to item, it is seven thirty, does anybody need a break? I see that we've lost three separate temporarily. Let's take ten minutes and, and take a break at this time, so.
Good evening, you guys. Sorry in advance if any of it gets repetitive because we did talk about it during discussion. First, since my last report, I had the privilege to attend monthly workshops via Zoom filled with student board members all across California serving school districts. And together, we were taught about our duties, responsibilities, especially the Brown Act and how we can better serve the students we represent. And those are going to continue monthly up until May. One of the main topics we discussed and which interested me the most was communication and outreach. Many students that we serve are not aware what the board does and its student board members do. However, after discussion with many students, they said they solved this problem by using social media and creating Instagram accounts. They dropped all their Instagram accounts into the chat and I was like so curious and I went digging. And through these accounts, they post regularly about updates that the board is doing that will affect the students directly. And it also provides a way to reach out with questions and concerns to students and students reach back to me or Abby. And ultimately, it makes reporting easy, meaningful, and it truly represents every student. And in Shasta, I believe we can do the same thing to hear every student's voice and I'm open to suggestions, comments, concerns about the matter. Next, sorry for the repetitiveness. The new California Assembly Bill 3216 requires that we, as the County Office of Education, adopt a new phone policy that limits or prohibits the use of cell phones by July 1st of next year. And after discussing this matter with my classmates and even teachers, a phone policy is essential to attentive instruction. However, we as students have an opinion we would like heard regarding our decision on the new phone policy. And as I bring up the matter again, I truly want to make sure our students' voices heard before we make a decision by July 1st. I'm here to provide my opinion, but I want the opportunity for every student's voice to be heard. Whether that be through me reaching out through the county or hearing it from students themselves through a public comment or a student voice panel. As a board member, I want to represent the students I serve, but find ways for students to represent themselves. On a good note, lastly, school activities are taking off down South County, West Valley. We are preparing for our first dance, our upcoming homecoming, and our second town parade. We are filling student sections and cheering our athletes on, we're building school spirit, and West Valley has finally adjusted to the largest student body of 800 students. And I'm excited to see where we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Abby Deng from Enterprise High School.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everyone again. As we all know, school started a month ago for us. And with the start of a new school year, the campus has been ruddying with energy and excitement. The first few weeks have brought a wave of activity. Sports season is kicking off, clubs are recruiting new members, and school-wide initiatives are beginning to take shape. Athletic teams are already deep into practices and early competitions, and there's noticeable school spirit and turnout at events. Ball sports like volleyball and football have drawn strong participation. We recently just had our homecoming game and although we didn't win and kind of lost kind of badly, but the spirit and support from the students was still really strong. Meanwhile, clubs are ramping up with recruitment drives and informational meetings. It is clear that students are eager to get involved again and it's definitely amazing to see. Also, this year, I was invited to enroll in the Restorative Justice Program at my school. So, just a quick overview of what Restorative Justice is. So, instead of focusing solely on punishment, it seeks to repair harm, rebuild trust, and address the root causes of behavioral issues. It emphasizes communication, facilitated by panels made up of fellow students. Where students, staff, and sometimes family can come together to talk about incidents, express how they were affected, and collaboratively find solutions. I am honored that I get to participate in this program this year. My first panel hasn't started, but it's scheduled to start soon. And I'm excited to see this initiative in action and share any insight or feedback that I may gain from my experience. Also, as a senior, I am already deep into preparing for college applications and applying for scholarships. Senior year is definitely a stressful time for not only me, but also many other students. However, sometimes that stress comes from not knowing what to do after high school. Last year, I had this project that I did for my AP Statistics class where I surveyed the students on my campus about their post-graduation plans. Around 15% of the seniors surveyed answered that they didn't know or were unsure. Keep in mind that this was conducted in May, so only a few weeks before graduation. I think that it is quite alarming that there are this many seniors who still have no plans for after high school. And this points to a larger issue, a lack of early guidance and accessible resources when it comes to post-graduation planning. While some students receive support from family or private counselors, many rely solely on school-based resources, which can sometimes be limited. I think providing more structure-consistent and early exposure to life after high school could ensure that all students leave with a sense of direction and purpose. To conclude, the beginning of the school year is full of potential. New activities, new expectations, and new programs are reshaping the student experience. As your student representative, I'll continue to gather and share feedback to help ensure that these changes serve all students equitably and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Very well done, both of you. Arthur, you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for serving because you might not know it, but you are very exceptional at wanting to do this. Because there's a lot of kids who do not just be way outside of how they felt to be in front of people, to give their opinion, and just to be that was a really appreciate it. That's what you stand something, that's what good people, people like that, and Abby, your passion as well. So, thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. Well done, both of you. Item 10, Superintendent's Report.
Jacob and Abby, you have me totally wanting to call an audible and share out some resources that came up at CSBA conference. But to respect our order of things and agenda, I will share those materials out and maybe we can continue the conversation later. Kevin Fleming spoke at the conference about relevance in preparing the workforce of tomorrow today. And I think that you would be interested in some of the information that he shared, so I'll pass that along later. Okay, let's, oh, quickly, on the independent study, I missed somebody in the queue. And I did want to turn it over to Lindsay Gilstrap to give us some additional information on that item 6.3.1. Oh, sorry, not independent study Prop 28. 6.3.1.
Okay, so point of clarification. Noncompliance for audit requirements related to each component of the work that we do vary depending on the compliance. And unlike the other arts and music funding, if the board were to not pass the report today, the recommendation would be fully allocated to the state. And so I had the opportunity to go back and read the Audit Guide, and I shared that with Austin. I'm thinking to share that with you guys, there are multiple forms that are authorized.
Sorry, I missed that point, and I'm glad that the board approved it. Okay, a quick update. This is in the spirit of our theme this year for '25-'26 is making things happen. So hopefully, I already let this one out with Maggie here present. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, and this is actually breaking news, like I haven't told anybody until now. This, I think it's been appropriate because we have recognized this partner. These community partners will be invited to the awards dinner as part of the annual education conference. But that work is being recognized statewide. When you look at CSBA Golden Bells, you're looking at things that are innovative, right? So, cool practice, and I think the team will have a great time being recognized for that. On the excellence front, my team across the board in our departments are developing and working with teams to finalize their '25-'26 department goals. Our fiscal team is working very hard to not only close our own fiscal programs, but those that provide fiscal services for districts. 'Tis the season for us. There is a looming deadline of Monday to have our books closed or un-audited actuals. Aspiring leaders, we have a book club internally for folks that are not yet in leadership positions but are seeking to learn more. So we'll be looking at the power of moments, and that kicks off next month. I enjoyed the CSBA County Board Conference, and we'll report out lessons learned from that later on in the agenda. I snuck off on Friday morning before the conference started. Sorry, Robert. Bailed on Robert. But I snuck off, no pictures yet. I just, I wanted to share briefly, I was able to go to a site visit in Salinas. And I know Teresa, I will be sharing some pictures that will light your fire. Because some of the things that you've shared with us about putting people in positions for education in trades, education in jobs that provide living wages. Rancho Cielo in Salinas has an enrollment of over 200 students. They operate a functioning 100-acre ranch. Yeah, incredible. Including their latest, their latest class offerings are automotive restoration, right? And in their auto mechanics, they have Ford curriculum from the Ford dealership. So, promising, but it was a mountaintop experience. We are not there, but we are doing some amazing things in this space. And I think it's important for us to see excellence, and then we can come back and, okay, what can that look like here? So, more to come from that. I just wanted to plant some seeds. I'll show some pictures, and I think that that will get the conversation started. But I was really there because we are looking at partnering with a charter school to provide services for expelled youth. And that's what led me to Rancho Cielo. That's exactly what that is. Rancho Cielo is a charter school, but it has expanded way beyond just serving expelled youth. So, conversations that we're having ongoing with Chiba. Rancho Cielo is a youth build, Chiba's a youth build, so there might be some cool things that we'll be able to do similar to them. I want to highlight a change. Carrie Schutte and their communications departments, working with leads across our departments. And we are shifting from, our State of Education breakfast is usually in the fall. We invite folks, we tell some stories of powerful partnerships. We are shifting to an open house where we will be inviting all members of the public to come and learn about the services that are provided by the Shasta County Office of Education. And that will be, Magnolia will be the hub and the center of the action. That'll be happening October 14th, 9 to 11 and 5 to 7. So, AM and PM, morning and evening sessions, given people's busy schedules. And so, we are excited. We will be having representatives from our departments. And then we'll be able to tell a little bit of the story of the work that we do. A little different there. And then, just a random, 'tis the season. We had a campaign candidate come through and met with me yesterday. Josh Newman is running for the state superintendent of instruction to replace Tony Thurman. He is, there are several candidates. He came through. There was no endorsement by Mike Freeman. It was simply, he wanted to draw close to what does, what does the thing, what is the impact of what happens in Sacramento to Shasta County? So needless to say, we spent a couple hours talking about some of those things. On the safety for all front, right here behind me actually, we have defibrillators in our buildings. And I just want to thank Ayla Tucker for that work. We are now in the process of actually, you know, planning what does that training look like for these devices? You heard from Jen in the Substance Prevention Classroom presentations. Today was our first Safer Schools Coalition where Ayla directs and facilitates that discussion. Where districts have safety reps there. Pretty powerful, great conversations. And I just want to thank, I want to thank the team because we have this partnership with 911 Shastcom Dispatch. When something happens in Shasta County, and this is kind of pulling back the curtain, but I think as a board, it's kind of cool for you to know. When something happens in Shasta County and 911 is dispatched in and around a school, we get a notification. We've actually contracted, thank you, James, and thank you, IT, for HipLink. It goes out to anybody that is subscribed to that list. So, admin, it's not an email because admin aren't in their inboxes. People get texts and they get priority level, one, two, or three, in terms of like you make the decision. Something happens and there's a priority one, two, or three next to Happy Valley School. If I'm at Grant School, I'm taking that information and I'm planning accordingly, right? If I'm close to where this thing is happening, then I'm taking action. If I'm far away from it, then maybe I'm monitoring it. But everyone is in the know immediately, and then they clear it when it's all cleared, so. And then here's the cool thing, the support there is when that happens, Ayla then reaches out to the districts to make sure that they had the support that they needed. That the right people received the messages, right? That it gave them the information that they needed. And then she provides that feedback to our law enforcement partners who will improve. So, just a great, great coverage. And then, Ayla has also provided a menu of services for districts to take her up on what safety supports look like. And so she's working closely with them there. And we have the last visitor policy that the board approved. She is now working with our departments in the implementation of what that visitor policy execution looks like. Cool things happening there. And here's just a, I knew you weren't going to be able to see them. But the idea is there are priorities. Priority one is, whoa, this thing is right on campus, next to campus, there's a dangerous threat. Priority two, priority three. And that's actually using law enforcement language. So, that dispatch, dispatch doesn't have to think because they don't have time to think. I'm just so proud of the team that launched Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Thank you, Laura. I remember the first time I heard about Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This is a direct fruit of the initiative that we have on literacy, right? So, I have been making media tour. I've been going to city councils. We've been going to anybody that will listen, and folks listen. They came out on the 4th for the filming of the movie Sentence. Teresa, thank you for being there as well. We had a reception. We had a panel afterwards. Our own Stephanie Byers was an incredible voice of expertise on that panel. Rolling forward, that was on the 4th. On the 6th, the Champions for Children happened at Turtle Bay, and we are rolling. Like I think there are 500 to 600 kids already registered in Dolly Parton Imagination Library, ready for their first book to come to the house. So, super cool to go live there. On the Tri Mountain Academy front, I remember, if you told me, remember if I shared last month that we are no longer calling our Juvenile Hall Court and Community School. We've named it Tri Mountain Academy. Our Tri Mountain Academy students, 74, actually it's up to 77% now, are enrolled in Shasta College. 77% of our students at Tri Mountain Academy incarcerated youth are enrolled and taking Shasta College classes. Cool. So, on the successful front, we've been talking in the literacy area around reading screener. So, those things are happening in the fall. We have a preparation for a math curriculum coming up. And so this office will be providing a lot of support for districts in that decision. And then I just want to mark your calendars. If anybody's interested in hanging out with 1,400 freshmen, anyone? Yeah, let's do it. November 21st, Shasta District Fairgrounds. The STEM, the annual, our ninth annual STEM Career Day is happening. And that is something to behold. And that is a regional, 1,400 from the region. So, you'll get, you'll get, Orland dominates. They send 200, 300 kids. So, it's a powerful, powerful opportunity for people to explore what the careers are. I don't know if you've ever been a part, but we fill Fusaro Hall. We fill all the halls, and there are drone, robot dogs, cal fires there, heavy equipment operations there. And it's just a way cool exposure for kids to learn more about what is out there in terms of STEM. On the support front, I do want to, I would love to testify, that is Anders Benoit, and that guy can make some try tips. So, we had our annual, we had our annual, I almost said Juvenile Hall. Our Tri Mountain Academy staff working with Probation in partnership. We want to, we want to support that partnership. We enjoy great partnership with Probation. And we have an annual barbecue, and that's what's happening there. I've already talked Sentence, Champions, I've mentioned New Educator Meet and Greet. We had our Excel Back to School Night. I'm trying to visit 60, there are 91 schools in Shasta County. And I have this, thank you Carmen so much for your calendar support. I'm trying to get to 60 schools, two-thirds of the schools this year. And I'm actually trying to get their T-shirts, so I want to wear their T-shirts the next time I come, right? I actually, I would love to take down those mountains, and I would love to see a display of every T-shirt of every school in Shasta County in this building. I think that that would look pretty fantastic. Or maybe when you walk in. Anyway, something. Anyway, to date, I've made 13, so I got some work to do. Latest today was Reading Achieve and they really did appreciate it. I don't know, educator appreciation, they were recognized for a model community day school. And so I went there and I saw some, I saw some cool things. I saw some really cool things and they really appreciated having me there. So they were, it was fun. I wanna thank Claudia is hitting the road, logging some miles, getting to every superintendent. I'm also trying to get to every superintendent and the conversation is what are needs? How can we help? What can, what can, what can that support look like? And so that, those conversations are informing what we're rolling out. We had a great American Indian Advisory Meeting this last week. You remember Kelly and Cindy were here at the close of last year, kind of reporting out what that work looks like. Had the opportunity, was invited to the Shasta College Library and Tutoring Center grand opening. I was invited to sit in the VIP section and I had nothing to do with that building. So I attended, but I wasn't in the VIP section because that felt kinda weird. And then the SSDA, as you know, Small School District Association, we are all in. We are paying the dues for qualified districts in Shasta County. And we are actually hosting, the Sheraton Hotel in Reading is hosting an E3 event with the SSDA October 3rd. And we're getting great feedback from districts really appreciating that membership. Sorry, that's a lot. I know I've talked to you a little bit about this before, but mark your calendars because we're going back to camp. Leadership Reading has taken on West Camp as their project. And we're having a gala, gala event, October 25th at the Shasta District Fairgrounds. And all proceeds go to benefit West Camp. And we are actually going back to camp. They're recreating some of those rite of passage moments from West Camp for adults to experience. So I don't know what a night hike looks like, but it should be fun. I, I would love to commit, I'm in the spirit of making it happen. I'd love to commit some things. The, the next time we're hanging out in this space in a regular board meeting, I'm hoping that from our conversation on September 24th, 24th, we'll have some direction on a new, on a new initiative. Right? So I'd love to, I'd love to have that, that goal written down. And then Jen mentioned the new Substance Use Prevention Youth Commission. I'm gonna, I would love to meet with those folks. So that's happening Monday. Successful student programs. We are continuing to meet with the, with the stakeholders at Chiba to forge relationships so that we can get to a place where we are serving our expelled youth better than we have because we're currently not. And then supportive relationships. We had a great American Indian Advisory Meeting and in that, we, we have a spinoff meeting that's going to be happening. Carmen's making happen that we would develop an annual plan. This is a late addition, but Michael's opening comment about the resolution and talking about the impact of cell phones. I just do not wanna let an opportunity pass by. In September, you put a mic in my face and I'm going to remind people that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Every day, 122 people take their lives in this country. And that is like an airplane going down every day. And if an airplane went down every day, we'd be talking about airline security. We're not necessarily talking about this, this issue enough. Times are hard and for everyone that it does happen for are attempted. So we can do, we can do more on, on that issue. And I, I think that's, concludes my report. On that super happy note, that concludes my update.
Thank you Superintendent Freeman. Moving on to items. Oh, Arthur.
Yeah, I was, I really liked that you brought up the collaboration with the law enforcement. I think I sent some board policies to you in the beginning of sometime this month, talking about CCWs for staff. That was applicable and then was communication with you, Michael. You know, they did pass legislation, the superintendent was enabled to do CCWs for staff about five years ago or more. But they didn't allow for, you have armed security guards for resource. So in that spirit, I was wondering if they were talking about increasing the amount of resource officers that were available, whether it be sheriff in a rural community or in our local communities, increasing a resource officer or security guards on campus is another layer like deterrent. Because what you talked about was really good as far as like they're getting standardized language to bring people to an incident. But perhaps we need just another layer deterrent, whether it's just a security guard on campus. Different states do things differently. Texas, they have a whole different way of doing things. They actually have a whole education department, like police force in their state. So every, every state does it different, but they actually have someone on staff at each location. It would decrease response time. Maybe they can increase that after evolving and all that kinda stuff. But if we, my vision was that if we'll, you know, school out and outrun the response time for local law enforcement, it's gonna be horrible. We don't have it up in Bernie Falls and Paul River Mills, like they don't have, you know, dedicated people to their school. But if somehow we could work it out to where we could increase the amount of resource officers or maybe arms.
Worked with law enforcement?
I think that would be an added benefit to our community as far as during that. So I didn't know if they talked about that during, today or not.
Yeah, and I have not had an opportunity to connect with Ayla in, in the, in the wake of what has happened today. Right? Today's, today was a, a heavy day and having school safe, having a Safer Schools Coalition is, is very timely and very appropriate. And I think it would be interesting to download from Ayla what that conversation looked like. I think in the, just in, in, in response to what the SRO landscape looks like, I can find that information and share that with the board. Because it is a combination of RPD and, and probation. And I, I think it does come down to feasibility. For our smalls, it is difficult. It's difficult. It's expensive, right? All, all of the things. But I can at least give you what it looks like right now. I don't, I don't think that there's conversation of increasing coverage with school resource officers. But I think it would be important for me to maybe connect with Ayla and then let you know what that, let the board know what that currently looks like as far as who has SROs on the campus. I remember being at Grant and kinda joking and asking, can you just give me an old police car? If you parked an old police car in the parking lot, that alone could probably be a deterrent.
Thank you. Onto item 11, 11.1.1 is a report from county board conference attendees. Mr. Freeman and I both attended the conference. There were, as we roll, there were two exceptional, or three exceptional keynote speakers. Mike mentioned one of them, Kevin Fleming. And what he had to say was, was, was very technical, but very pertinent. But, and, and he had a rubric for how to be successful at anything you're doing. And what, what, what caught my attention was, was he had three sections. First section is just doing as little as possible. Second session is maybe being a little more involved. And the third section was, was what he called crushing it. And what, what, what my key takeaway was, was write down your key takeaway from any extent you attend and then share it with someone who doesn't know it. And then share it again. And then share it again. But you gotta write it down so that you can remember it. Yeah? And the last day of the conference was extremely impressive for me. There was a young man who presented, his name's Chris, Chris Lynn. The young man was in a juvenile academy, I don't know where. But he had, he, he, his life had been tragic. His mother was incarcerated, died of incarceration. Never knew his father. Was, was fostered with his aunt who beat him regularly and abused him and, and, and neglected him. And he ended up, you know, he ended up acting out. He ended up, you know, running with gangs and, and was in the juvenile court school. And he talked about having a moment in the common area of, of, of the job. And he came to the realization that I have value. And that's what we need to bring, to that realization. We all have value. So he came to that realization that I have value and he started, started advocating for himself. And he struggled to convince the people in the system that he had value, that he was worthy of redemption. Okay? And we're all worthy of redemption. That's, that's, it shouldn't even be a question. So, but he never gave up. He became dual enrolled in his community college. Got a transfer degree. Got a scholarship to UC Berkeley. Okay? Graduated from UC Berkeley with honors. Got a scholarship to Stanford Law. He's now in his second year at Stanford Law. Okay? I want somebody from Shasta College to have that kind of story. That's just, I mean, that's why we're here. If we're not here for that person, then we need to rethink our priorities. I attended several breakout sessions. The two that stood out the most to me were the one, was one about beyond the screen and the talk was about cell phone. And it was not just cell phone usage in class, but cell phone usage in general. And Arthur, I wanna, wanna, uh, the point you made about having traffic accidents increase after the advent of cell phones. They brought that up. That was one of the points that they made. And that's just tragic. So one of the things, one of the presenters said that stuck with me that I wanted to share with you, so I wrote it down, is that a cell phone is a source of loneliness. It is not a source of connectivity. It, it's a source of isolation. Because we can do everything from our bed or from our, you know, I mean, you know, we need personal interactions. We need personal connections. The other breakout session that I attended that really impressed you was Reach about promoting teachers. And Jackie, you were talking about this while we were in the meeting. So in order to get a credential, all you need is bachelor's degree. You don't have to have any, but to get that temporary credential, all you need is that bachelor's degree. You get the temporary credential and they will shove you in a classroom. But you have no teacher's grad. So Lake County had this pro, has this program called Teach Lake County where they take people, they take local. They help them get their degrees. They help them, and they might be starting a Sunday with just a high school diploma. But they help these, these people that works in the school system. They help these people get their bachelor's degree. And frequently they have to do it online, but that's fine. I mean, they did too. We're, we're talking about rural areas. So I, I was trying to figure out how to, how do we implement this? Well, we need to have a strategic plan for implementing this program. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that we already have the, the basis of one in, in Shasta County. But what, what it needs to teach is not just how to get the credential, but classroom management. How, trauma-informed practices. I mean, anybody that's going into teaching needs to understand about trauma and how it affects the development of brain. Because they're dealing with students with developing brain. So it should have a rural perspective and be aligned to our core values. Because this could be a significant investment in our community, in our county. And I think we should, we should really touch it up. And that's all I've got.
How about this for a little Dr. Fleming teaser? Actually, I just wanna, I wanna highlight one thing. As I'm there in CSBA and I'm going to these different sessions and I'm hearing these different keynotes, I feel so much pride in the work that we are doing in Shasta County because we could be presenting. I went to a charter school oversight panel presented by our friends at Butte County Office of Education and they spoke about relationships. Later on, earlier this week, I went to our charter, charter authorizer meetings and they said we should be going to conferences talking about the relationships that this county has with charters. So it is different. AV84, right? AV84 is, is stuck. It's, it's a two-year cycle, right? So our AV84 is, is not moving forward with this year. But like all of the charter noise that we're hearing from the state is from bad players that aren't here. We actually, I saw so much of what they shared with charter oversight that aligns with the work that Nate helps us with, with our, with our three authorized charters. So I think that I did have some eye-opening things. Dr. Fleming, who we've actually had here in Shasta County as part of our Reach Higher Shasta work. Dr. Fleming has come and talked about industry certification versus bachelor's degrees. His story is, I had two bachelor's degrees, two master's degrees on the wall. And I went to a one-week GIS mapping industry certification. And that one-week course paid more bills than any of those degrees on the wall did. Right? So he shares this, Abby Jacob, check this out. 74% of working adults in the US say their education was irrelevant to their work in day-to-day life. So I'm hoping you're feeling some relevance as you go through your education. But like that to me as an educator was like, okay, we gotta, we gotta have some, we gotta have some more conversations about that. So, so powerful, powerful things. I think I did appreciate the insight, just some of the legislative updates that we received. I, I did have the opportunity to again go, I, I do love what Placer County Office of Education does. Placer County Office of Education has a shared governance model that I'd love to share as part of our September 24th full planning day. Where we have the opportunity to look at what, what does initiative work look like? And then how do we structure, what does a member of the board do? Right? And how do they, how do they, I appreciate Jackie taking the ACCBE rep. Right? So like what is the wood that needs to be chopped? And of the, of the nine of us, how can we, how can we chop that wood and bring back reports? And Placer's got a cool model there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, but I thought it was a great, great conference. Better than expected.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Item 11.1.2, Board Reports, Correspondence and Comments. Laura.
Yeah, I was just gonna say quickly, I got to do two volunteer gigs last week, helping at the Sentence movie with the Dolly Parton table and the Reading Pals table. And it's really nice to connect with people in the community and let them know about those programs. And then on Saturday, I got to be part of the Children's Event at Turtle Bay and I was working with ADA and early childhood. We were doing wind tunnels. They were a huge hit with the kids, little kids. And it was just, I don't know, it was just kinda nice to see all these young families coming through and these kids were so excited to be there. And there were tons of just all these groups in the community that provide services for children. So just, it was fun to be there and work with the kids, but also to see just how much support there is in the community to help young families and little kids. So it was fun.
Thank you Laura. Arthur.
Couple of things to talk about. The one, we did send a letter proposing AV84. And that has been gutted and ended just kinda how all of this worked in California. So they kinda gutted AV84 since it was left on the docket and they put two other bills that had made it past the assembly. And put it into Senate Bill 4.14 and Senate Bill 4.94. So it took the language out of AV84 and put it into those two bills. So something to look at because California, take whatever they want out of one bill and throw it into the other one. And since it's already on the pass assembly, now it's in the Senate and they can pass it, put it on the governor's desk this year. So something to be aware of. And if you guys can, honestly, this is, but if you guys can look those up and see how that aligns with our charter schools here. If it just took out everything out of the board, put it into those two bills, then I'm pretty sure we can cover some of that for the others. And then the other, the other one that, I mean, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but it's something that happened. Things happen all the time that we have to roll over. Things happen all the time that we have no control over. And Charlie Kirk was giving his speech today at Utah Valley University. He's just setting up to give freedom of speech to people to debate whether they agree with him or not. Fortunately, someone took his life, shot him in the neck, and blood out there in front of thousands of college students. So I don't speak for the whole board, but I tried to write a letter today reflecting how we should condemn violence in all forms, even political ones. So I'll just read this, what my thoughts, what I put down today. "Shasta County Board of Education stands united in condemning all forms of violence, including the tragic death of Charlie Kirk at the Utah Valley University. Such acts of violence, particularly global violence, threaten the safety, unity, and well-being of our community and our nation. As Representative of Shasta County Board of Education, we call on all residents of Shasta County to join us in rejecting violence in all forms. We are united as neighbors and Americans, committed to fostering compassion, respect, and safety in our schools and communities. We offer a heartfelt prayer for Charlie Kirk, strength for his family, and healing for our nation. We are Shasta County, we are Americans. The Shasta County Board of Education urges our community to come together in prayer for Charlie Kirk, his family, and all those affected by this tragedy. Let us stand together, one against all forms of violence, including political violence, and work to build a future of hope, togetherness, and peace in our schools, our neighborhoods, and beyond. And together, we can ensure that unity prevails." And I know that when we are a government entity here, we have to abide by the Genus, the Brown Act, and all that kind of stuff. But when things come up like this, it's immediate. And I do have a letter, if anybody wants to sign this, saying that they do support this letter to address the community. I'll just leave it here, and you guys can sign it. Just affirming that you support it. I would like to bring something to the board at a future date, maybe the next one on the 24th, just a resolution or a statement from us, not specifically about Charlie Kirk, but just about political violence or violence in schools. Something that we could all get behind, because we have students, and we support their free speech. And whether they agree with each other or not, we can't have our campuses at part of violence of any kind. But we need to teach our kids that we can rise above all of this and not resort to killing one another, harming one another, or causing violence to one another. And I think supporting something like this as a group of individuals, we could fine tune this and put something really good together on the 24th. But like I said, I'm going to leave this here. If anybody wants to sign it, you're more than welcome to. It doesn't, it's not an action of the board, but it is a letter of support saying that we do condemn violence and build the violence in all kinds.
Thank you, Arthur.
Yeah, I don't, if there's ever a good reason to have a Brown Act violation, I think that those words are just that. I would just look to Tom and ask, please let us do whatever we can to honor the spirit of that. If there are board members that would like to sign it, if that's what we can do, then great. I would just look to legal for any guidance, because this happened today, right? And we do believe in laws, and we have a Brown Act, and so we don't necessarily, we're not in a position to take action on something that is not on the agenda. Please advise us on what we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman, your letter is very well-written, hard copy. Thank you. You're right, we can't act on things that aren't on the agenda. However, as important and vital to our nation as this topic is, political violence is not something that's generally under the jurisdiction of this board. So like, if I should just sign the letter or not, does it seem that it would be something perfectly acceptable?
Thank you. I'll stop. I think more than anything else.
Actually, really quick, I do have it revised, because I would love to have our student board members have the opportunity to sign it. And the copy that I had had seven lines, so we went and added two more.
Cool. Thank you. I mean, it, more than anything else, it speaks to the fact that we need to tone down the rhetoric. That the rhetoric has gotten out of control, and it's out of control of everyone. So I, you know, violence is never the way to settle anything. My board report is about the ROP school. I attended my first ROP school meeting last week, and I'm happy to report that the ROP school is fully enrolled. And we have seven students attending from our program. So, I mean, which is significant, so. And that's all I've got. Does anybody else have any reports, correspondence, or comments? Jack.
Hi, RSVP for the orientation, the ACCVE orientation call you, so that's done. Our Carmen, that's done.
You can sign it or not. We're not taking any action on this. This isn't a board action. This is something that, yeah, that Trustee Gorman brought on his own. And you can sign it or not. It's simply a call to, on violence. If there are no more reports, correspondence, or comments, we will go to item number 12, which are reminders of upcoming events. On September 18th at 3:30, the American Indian Advisory Education Series.
Yeah, this is part one of, I think, a three-part series throughout the year. Different experts are brought in on different topics. And I believe that this is the Iqwa, Indian Children's Welfare.
Thank you. On October 1st and October 2nd, we have planned a county committee travel and meeting to Montgomery Creek on the 1st. And October 2nd, we're doing Whitmore. And my understanding is that only three board members have indicated that they are going. Folks, we all need to attend these. These are extraordinarily important meetings. The county committee is one of the most important things we do as a board, because this is where we have limited oversight of other school boards in the county. And it's important to them, because they want to proceed with this action that we attend. Okay? So three people is unacceptable. We need more people to sign up. We have to have at least four to have a quorum.
We have a quorum established.
Thank you. Okay, so October 1st at 5:00 p.m., our county committee will meet at Montgomery Creek School. And October 2nd at 5:00 p.m., we will meet at Whitmore Elementary School.
Carpooling will be available, and if it's any, if the town halls that have been held are any indication, they should be quiet meetings, like cricket quiet.
So we'll be in and out, and back home by, I hope, December. We just have to drive up into the mountains, that's all. On October 14th, from 8:30 to 11:30, and from 4:30 to 7:30, we will have the Scoey Open House. And then on October 23rd, we do Shasta Reads 2025. Those are our upcoming events. Do we have any board member feedback about this? Mr. Gorman.
I didn't see the part in the email where I had to respond. Coming to those board meetings, I didn't respond saying I was coming, but I am coming on the October 1st and October 2nd.
Great, awesome. Just in the calendar invite, if you can accept the calendar invite, that will.
And the second part of the feedback, we're circulating this around for us to sign, something that could be submitted into the minutes? Or is that, it's not an action of any kind? So like, I'm just wondering if I'm just going to take them as they appear.
I believe it. So in my notes, I have your request to bring something to future meetings, and we could, at a minimum, agendize what we just did here and have it recorded. At a minimum. But there were other things that possibly we could have as agenda.
Laura.
Yeah, as far as a topic for a future meeting, we used to always in the fall get a report on enrollment, how it looked in Shasta County. So it would be how our enrollment is for our programs, but then Shasta County enrollment over all, overall, with students. So I would be interested in hearing that.
Thank you. With that in mind.
Yeah, we just received the first, we just received first week countywide and historical, so we'll be able to show that.
So you know other meeting feedback? We will go on to item 14. Our next meeting will be September 24th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. here at the Shasta County Office of Education, PDC. But I believe it will be next, or we won't be in this room, it'll be over there. And that's 9 on September 24th. And with that, we are adjourned.